So, in that case, if they came in, what we would try to do is clean that up. Where if they wanted to do a subdivision, that they, you know, follow the county line. We had one that was doing a bounty lot adjustment and we did that, they cleaned it up so that the lots were, didn't have the county line running through it anymore.
But, but I'm envisioning, I'm envisioning my mom and dad's lot out here. Okay, they've got, they've got a parcel that's mostly Delta County piece and Montrose County. And it would literally, I mean, if they were ever to do any kind of development, it would be impossible just because of the layout of the place to do anything on that lot. So I just, I don't necessarily paint ourselves into a corner here. And, and I mean, maybe just as simple as, you know, unless no other options are available.
Again, this is, this is trying to get to newly created lots. So they're coming in for a new subdivision.
Right, right, but I'm just, I'm just saying, you're not always gonna have that ability to cut that line directly on a county line. And, and I, I see we want to try to do that, but I mean, it just, you know. Unless, unless not reasonably possible, add that to the end and that, that would probably be sufficient to satisfy my...
Or something like they're discouraged. I, I can think of a lot exactly the same in Delta and Montrose County. Yeah, irrigated pasture land and it would, would make no sense at all to break it at the county line.
Right.
If it was divided. It wouldn't because it's, it's irrigated, it's just where the irrigation runs. So, maybe something where that is discouraged or, you know, less unreasonable or something.
Right, right, just, just something, I mean, where we, I, like I said, I can understand that's our desire, but it's just not always gonna be possible.
So, okay. Well, like, avoid creating new lots divided by municipal or county county line? I mean, it doesn't say that was shopped non, but you try to avoid it.
If possible.
If possible.
There's some caveat in there though.
And if the, if the layout of the property, if it makes sense, yeah, absolutely. And Carl, at what point are we gonna have to coordinate with a neighboring county when we're doing that?
We always do. I mean, well, that, that's...
If it touches the...
That's in my practice.
If it touches the boundary line, you're coordinating with them.
Yes. And we've received things from Montrose County where it's even not even in Delta County, but it's near, near adjacent to, to the boundary line. Um, different projects. But especially when we have a project that overlaps with, that's for sure. We, like I said, we had a boundary line adjustment. Um, with, you know, Garfield County, we, we made contact, asked what their process was, was it any different? They wanted to take lead or, you know, depending on where the development is also. So say the development's on the other side of the county line, you know, they're, they're building a building on the other side of the county line. That's, that's theirs. But having that conversation. Or in, in case if it's a town, you know, one of the municipalities, the parcel's split that way, same idea.
To a point, you could have more, more of your municipality.
Right.
Anything else in that section?
Moving to the next change then on page eight. We struck language, the dimensions and geometry. That last sentence of number one, and shall facilitate building sufficient access, work to access setbacks, open space, site, privacy and views. Just simplifying that language. And then in a, under design approach, changing avoid to minimize in sub items one through four. So then that brings us to stewardship areas, which is where we left off. We had started having some conversations there. I haven't made any changes in that, that section yet, but I did do, you know, some, some research on that. There is the conservation stewardship program. That offers annual payments under a five-year contract with opportunity to renew for another five years if they need conservation goals. So, you know, I think that what we're trying to do is get to what is long-term maintenance? What, what are we asking them to do in order to get the benefit of a clustered subdivision? Where there is not a limit on the number of lots or the, and there's no minimum size for the lots.
So we're trying to come up with a term other than perpetuity, guys?
Yes, well, defining long-term in that, in this case, what is long-term? Fifteen years, ten years?
You know, the, I've given this a little bit of thought. And, you know, for the, for the clustered subdivision, they're giving up the stewardship area as kind of the trade-off. And, you know, I, I gotta think if, if, if we don't have probably at least twenty years on there. You know, then it's, you know, it's not forever, but it's, it's long enough to make sure that it's doing the right thing. That's just, I don't know. I don't know that much more than twenty is, is logical. And I, I also think that, you know, if you're gonna, if you're gonna do that kind of development, there should be at least, at least a commitment of at least twenty years.
Why, why do you think no more than twenty? What you're...
I think that's a generation.
It's generation, that's, that's my point, it's generation. I mean, long-term, it's okay. And I, and I, and I'm not, I'm not saying that, that's just the thought I've given behind it, that's just kind of where I'm, where I let it go.
So are we talking about two different things? One is, we're talking about identification of a stewardship area. And remember, last time we were here, we didn't, there's not necessarily, correct me if I'm wrong, Carl. Not necessarily the timeframe established with that. It really is until something else happens. Cause we can't, you know, we're not gonna, if someone comes up with a new development application, twenty years in the future, fifteen years in the future, it'll be looked at on its own merits. But what this sentence is talking about is the developer providing financial surety or a plan for long-term maintenance of that stewardship area. And you're talking about a twenty-year plan to maintain.
It's not a plan and financial surety.
Yeah, cause, because, but once again, like I said, I mean, if, if, you know, they're, they're making this commitment for this type of subdivision. And, and I don't know that twenty years is, is that bad of a time for them. You know, but, you know, subdivision change after twenty years.
Maybe a different angle.
I mean, if, if they choose to put in a conservation easement, that's, that isn't perpetuity. I mean, that, that's a, that, but, and that would qualify, you know, as far as meeting that requirement. And that, that's why, you know, when I was looking at this program, the conservation stewardship program, you know, I think, I think that's, that is also another way to provide that financial surety. They're, they're entering a, into a contract to manage that.
Okay, just thinking of what Lisa Poyea just walked us through with all those funds.
Yeah, but this, this is, this isn't anything that's guaranteed by the county, correct? This is guaranteed by the...
Developer.
Developer as part, and it's through their development, through their homeowners association.
I mean, again, this is where we've been kind of trying to develop what that, what that is.
What it looks like.
What it looks like.
Yeah, and I, I had assumed this was gonna be like a, like a homeowner's association, financial surety type situation, not a, not anything run by the government, was my...
Having spent the last two years working with Carl's office to clean up some of these old escrows, I would, I would very much think that we don't want to manage these.
No, no, and we need to say that.
We just finished that.
I know, right.
We need to say that, this is not a county managed or finance thing. It's, it's done via a homeowners association or other agreement that provides that plan and that financial surety.
Yeah, with a bond, with a, with something.
Whatever they wanna give the flexibility to be creative there.
So when you say with a bond, they're holding bond, uh, holding bond.
I'm just, I'm just throwing, something, somehow, some sort of assurance.
For, right now, it's a minimum of twenty years.
So sometime, like a plan, like an agreement, maybe?
A plan, a good, homeowners agreement, whatever they wanna do there.
But you're, then, then you're imposing a homeowners association on incorporated money.
Well, the developer is choosing to do that because they're getting the advantage of a stewardship, of a clustered subdivision.
Right.
Or something.
What if it's more like a, like we have a shared maintenance agreement for, for an access? That for a period of time, they're agreeing that they're going to, to maintain it in a certain way, for, you know. Cause we don't require a bond for that.
We also don't require financial surety for that.
Right, no, I, I understand.
But, but I think this is getting to another level of, of obligation of the developer would need to provide some sort of assurance that that property is, or that stewardship area is going to be managed.
I like actually that term better. It's more consistent with what we've done elsewhere. With that, the long-term, uh, long-term maintenance.
Yeah.
Instead of HOA type. Or similar.
Long-term being twenty years.
Minimum twenty.
Minimum.
And Carl, have, in the clustered subdivisions discussions you've had with people, how does this thought fit in with how we just laid out?
Some haven't had any, any concern with, with it, cause they just, they, they could plan on continuing the agricultural use. What you heard this morning, they didn't wanna do a clustered subdivision, they wanted to go to rezoning, cause they didn't wanna put the, the remaining land in stewardship area. Even though, when they were, when they were talking about it, they were talking about stewardship of the land. They didn't wanna be locked down.
Recovered.
Um, I think if, if it's more defined, I think people can make a, a better decision on, on, does stewardship area work for them or not? I don't know, Kate, you've had some of those conversations too?
Um, I mean, the ones that we've had, it's been, the ones that I've had anyway, they've had big areas of agricultural land and, you know, wanting to split up the smaller pieces, so. You know, they haven't really had any issues with it, but...
But again, maintaining in an ag is, meets the goals.
Right.
That's the financial security. To say, is that, is that financial surety?
No.
That, that's, that's the challenge.
That's what I'm trying to get to.
Right, that's the challenge.
I think it's the financial surety that has been kind of getting people...
You know, and then vice versa, if you put it, if you put it in some type of HOA, is it then gonna be the, you know, HOA members that are responsible for keeping the ag operation viable? You know, that, that can go both ways.
I don't know, the, the planning commission did have discussions, I don't know if TK has a, a thought on that, but...
Yeah, well, if you're asking that, I don't know that we actually came to a complete understanding of what a stewardship area was, but in the context of a cluster subdivision, it was basically gonna be a, an area that wasn't gonna be built on. And most of it's, we just, I don't know, it could be ag land, it could be scrub oak, it could be, it could be a whole number of things. But generally, we weren't gonna get into maintenance, because I'm not sure that's our business. It was mostly, you're trading some no-build areas to be able to have a higher density somewhere else. And that's as far as we got. I don't much, you know, I think, we start to say you gotta, the HOA keep it, what, you know, you gotta define what maintenance is. I don't know what maintenance is, but it mostly, it's, it's undisturbed land. And the county, that means it just stays that way.
How did financial surety come into stewardship areas to begin with?
I don't remember, I wasn't here, wouldn't look at it.
Yeah, I don't agree.
I don't remember either.
I think it may, maybe, just taking a guess, you know, when you're, if you're talking about the wildlife, per, you know, purpose for a stewardship area, it's, it's kind of managing that, managing the habitat, you know, like conservation easement of some sort. I, I don't know. Do you remember?
No, I'm...
No. I don't have to spend much time on it.
We, we, we didn't spend too much time on it and I don't remember. I, I, I remember having a, a discussion about it and just the fact of, you know, how are you gonna maintain that, that area? But I don't... You know, but we've... But there's different types, that's, the problem is, like, like TK said, there's different types of areas you're talking about here. Could be ag, it could be scrub oak, it could be adobe. I mean, it could be just, just open space that you're trying to maintain. Some of that's easily maintained by doing nothing, some of it is maintained because, because you have to throw money at it.
Well, and the, and the way this reads, commissionership is sorry, it reads financial surety or other mechanism for long-term maintenance of stewardship area. I mean, in that situation, you know, and then if, if it was added, which, you know, for a minimum of twenty years, you know, this is what you're talking about. Then that, I guess, leaves that in the director's judgment of whatever is presented, the plan, whatever it is, whether it's...
Exactly.
And then, of course, that always has the appeal to the BOA if they don't like that, right? You know, and so there are some, there's some due process in there as well, even the way it reads, if you just add for a minimum of twenty years. You know, that, they give somebody a plan, you know, a timeframe to create a plan. If it's scrub oak, okay, well, I don't know. If it's cornfield, I don't know. If it's a swamp, well, that's, all those can look at, river bottom line or something.
So what I'm hearing is, could be workable for everyone, would be a plan, financial surety if needed. Or another mechanism to maintain that, this natural state. Of the twenty years.
So just a simple cleaning up and possibly location question. Do we wanna put number six under D somewhere versus where's that?
Yeah, I think, yeah, it would probably make, I was... Versus under design, you know?
So where some, some individual or organization will maintain, uh, the maintenance area. And, you know, two to five years down the road, whoever's gonna forgive about that unless somebody at the cluster subdivision hollers about it. Kind of like the HOAs that are around the county. You know, those have all gone by the wayside and nobody, you know, collects dues to help with anything, so. This will probably go by the wayside after a few years in.
You're such a cynic, Mike.
So what if, what if it's more like, instead of just long-term maintenance, say, a, a maintenance plan shall be provided that includes financial security or some other mechanism that to show that the stewardship area will be maintained for at minimum twenty years? Something like that. So they're presenting a plan of how they're going to do that, that would be part of the application. Would be part of the review as the clustered subdivision comes to the planning commission and the board.
Will this result in a plat note on the stewardship area personally?
I think it could, certainly.
So that it, there's an expiration date?
We have plat notes that refer to covenants and plat notes that refer to, you know, other documents that have been recorded. If you want that plan to be recorded, could certainly make that as a plat note.
But it has to have an expiration date?
The twenty years, yeah. That would be in the plan.
With those general guidelines, can we redirect it back to Carl and staff?
We could reference a reception of...
Right.
So that, yeah.
What do you think?
Yeah, you know, the problem is, you just sit here and you think about all the, all the holes in it, the what-ifs, you know? And that's, that, that becomes a challenge, so, but...
But that provides the landowner, the developer, the flexibility to...
Isn't that their plan?
Yeah. If they wanna go clustered subdivision route, be creative? So Carl, you wanna take a stab at that?
Okay.
With those general guidelines?
Okay. They don't move it down under, under section D. Kind of good fit there, I think it fits, yeah. Okay, so then speaking of that, we're, we're under, under section D, use of stewardship areas. Are there any other changes on, on page nine? Or just on section D, there's a couple of sentences on top of page nine.
I have nothing else to tell you, okay?
Okay.
Let's go there.
Okay, moving on to page ten, subdivision E, preliminary plat review process. So this is walking through the steps of the preliminary plat. Does the planning commission for recommendation to your board?
It's been identified that in E two, A sub two, room on the agenda could be an issue. What do you guys think of that?
No, we've got...
I mean, so far, we haven't had an issue with having so many applications that there is a room on the agenda.
TK?
Say it again, what are you talking about?
Um, one of the spec, one of the parameters for hearing a preliminary plat application at the next regular meeting is available room on the agenda. Is that something really needs to be in the land use code?
I mean, no, it's really, you know, the staff decides our agenda anyway, we don't decide our agenda, so they put it on whenever they can.
Well, in, in coordination with the, with the chair.
Yes, and the chair is always involved, but you've got, you know, we have some times where we don't meet. In the, you know, like Thanksgiving, Christmas, we've actually determined that there are some meetings we're not howling. So we don't hold a meeting every second and fourth Wednesday through the year. So if that's in there, that can be a conflict.
Well, the...
I think we can strike that statement out.
Yeah, I, I think, I mean, cause it, it opens up some, some challenges.
Agreed?
Yeah.
Did you get that, Carl?
Yeah, so effectively that would read, generally the application shall be referred during the next regular meeting of that bo, of that body that meets, provided there is sufficient time to meet applicable public notice requirements, period.
Yes. Anything else under preliminary plat review process, Carl? We had a bunch of strikeouts there that we talked about.
Right, I don't have anything else. I guess maybe this, just to interject here, there has been some comments recently about successive subdivision, minor plats to get around the process of a preliminary plat. So for example, person has one lot and they come in for a minor plat, which is administrative, they divide it in two, and then they immediately subdivide those two lots into two more each. So now they, now they have four lots, where they come in for the four lots, it would have been a preliminary plat, gone to the planning commission and the board. And it is an end around to the preliminary plat process, but it is more processed too. They have to have, submit an application for each, each one. Each one, we can't do the, the, oh, the successive plats until the first one's done. Until that first one is done and recorded, it creates two lots, we can't subdivide lots that don't exist yet. So there is, there is some time constraints with that. If that's a concern, then, you know, you know, I don't, I, there, there's different ways to take it. You know, that, once those others come in, the trigger is the need to do a preliminary plat. Or there's just a certain amount of time in between doing another minor plat administratively. Year, two years, whatever that might be. I'm just, I'm, I'm putting that out there here at the preliminary plat because that, that's...
Or maybe, or maybe the, maybe the best way to do it is, you know, if, if, if there's been a, a minor plat through, with administrative approval, and then within two years, if you're coming back in to subdivide that again in two years, you have to go through the preliminary plat process.
Yeah.
Just, just, I mean, not saying you can't do it, just, just to avoid somebody coming in and doing the end around on the system and... Cause yeah, we, I mean, we've got instances out there right now where that's, that's the concern.
Yes, that is, that is happening right now.
Good for that, Mike.
Okay, I don't know if two years is the right timeframe, but I think... No, not twenty, John.
Just joking.
Twenty, twenty-five.
Twenty, twenty-five.
I, I think two years is enough to make, make the, the individual think, well, should I just go through the preliminary plat now once? And rather than have to wait two years to go through the, the next, next subdivision. Okay, um, so we'll figure out where to, where to insert that language. And then going into section four, final plats. We made some changes here, just cause, to make the distinction with a, especially with a minor plat. The way the land use code was written, it didn't need to come to the board, however, there's a number of cases where we've had minor plats that have dedication, they do need to come to the board, so we wanted to make sure that was identified and addressed in here. We also wanted to verify that, make it real clear, when you, when you do a subdivision, you have to have the improvements done for the final plat, the water tap is in, the road is in, or access, I should say. May not necessarily be a road, may just be an access up to a county road, electrical, those kind of things.
Does it include address?
It does not include address, because the address will depend on where they put the structure on a lot, especially larger lots. However, we are looking at all that, as, as it's going through the process, GIS isn't involved, you know, it's kind of, you know, so there, there aren't any problems with addressing, but more relative to what does it trigger the need for road naming, so that, that's clear upfront as we get into the process.
So the, the addressing is something that we need to, we need to nail down here a little bit, because it seems several times a year, we're having issues where somebody's bought a lot, they want to build something on it, they don't know whether they're going to build their house, maybe they build a little shop first, but they need an address so they can have equipment delivered, or whatever they're doing, they need to have that address, and yet, you know, they can't get that address because they're not building a house, or, you know, the, I, I don't know, they're just, I, I think we need to find some way that we possibly clean up that process, because it, it does, it comes up at least three to four times a year.
I know Kerry's been working on drafting, you know, revisions to the address standards. The land use code simply refers to the address standards, so it doesn't actually get into the, the net table. But what we're trying to do, when we have, with these subdivisions now, is the access is done, the, the lots created, the access is, is established, so when they come in, all they're doing is, here's where I'm putting the house, and here's your address. But GIS does ask that to know where that structure is for, for the addressing, at least a, an envelope, it doesn't have to be, you know, a surveyed site plan or anything like that.
But just to be clear, they can, somebody can still get an address for, you know, a barn or something if they're not developing just yet, or if it's, you know, basically just ag and they want deliveries or something. The GIS has been issuing addresses for that, so it's not that they can't get one, if they still go through the site plan review, we just don't look at water and things like that, it's, you know...
We don't require addresses for barns though.
No, but if they want to for deliveries, they can ask for one in, in GIS.
They get, people get addresses for pumps, water pumps.
Yes.
Or sprinklers or something.
Electrical meters.
Because they, they have.
So like, I know previously, before like the code was adopted, there was, like, if you didn't build within a year, your address could be revoked and things like that, so there's been a lot of changes working with GIS, and none of that's happening now, and, and, you know, we're working with GIS, like, you know, is this okay if they get this address? Is there going to be any issues? Is anything going to be revoked or anything? So we've been getting people addresses, even if it's not a house, so, I mean, we've worked to make sure that that's not something that's not held up for, for people.
Okay. Is it an answer to your concerns?
Yeah, I just, like I said, it's something I hear, hear about sometimes.
The main thing is that they have access. You know, GIS has been reluctant to issue an address unless they have access.
Right.
And that, and that's understandable, and that's, I don't think there's no problem with that, so...
Anything else on the final plats, subsection A?
Is there anything else from the surveyors, not any in this section that we needed to...
Not in this part. That was really more of what we were just going through, the boundary line adjustment versus minor plat and...
Just making sure we get that clear.
Yeah. So subsection B, we, there was some language in the previous subdivision regulations about expiration of the final plats. However, if the final plat's not, not submitted from the time they had the preliminary, so we brought that, or just to add some clarity as far as what those timelines are. And also, when there's phases, that there's timelines associated with the phases, it's not just in perpetuity, you know, once you final, submit the, the first final plat, there are some people that felt that that was the case, even though the subdivision regulations, you know, pre, pre land use code had timelines, there was the feeling that, you know, once you have that, that preliminary plat approved, it would last until forever.
And I think that was, that was something that was conveyed from, from prior, prior staff too, so...
I understand, yeah, communication, and that's why I try and make it clear here.
Yeah, the director has discretion to, to extend under hardship circumstances?
Right.
So do we... So, under, under B...
What do you think?
I, I'm just, you know, shall require the applicant to begin processing it. I mean, do we, do we, I mean, that saying, under no circumstances, no matter what, sorry you've been in the hospital for the last sixty days, you have to start it again.
Well, no, under, under subsection three, they could request an extension, I mean, that would be cause for...
But if, but if they're incapable, you know, somebody's in the hospital incapable to file that extension, and we, we've had that, we've had that, that scenario, where we've had people, things have happened, they've been down and out, I, I just, a hard shell there, I don't know is the right, the right answer, so...
And where are you reading that at?
Under B timelines, timelines expiration extension. B one. And three, I understand the three gives them thirty days prior to the expiration, but if, if something happens and they're, they're unable to do that, but...
Again, the director has the discretion to extend. If the director knows or gets a call and says, "I am in the hospital..."
But, but technically under number one, it doesn't give him the direction to direct it.
Yet, that's under three.
But that's only if they've given the extension, I'm saying.
You could just put May instead of...
Put May in there instead of shell.
Okay, I'm good with that. Or...
Well, okay, the, the problem with that is then there's no language to say a stale application or waiting for a final plat has, has expired. You gotta have at some, at some point, you gotta say it's done.
So, so here, this, this comes up, I've got a constituent that's called and, and had this discussion with me several times, a family mem- a family member that was doing the subdivision, lost her husband, and it was during hard economic times, they never got it put in, and, and they, you know, they had to start fresh. I mean, granted, most of the work was done, but it's still, it's still time and money, and, you know, things happen, so...
Yeah, but how long do you let them sit there then?
How, procedurally...
Go ahead.
Procedurally, under the land use code, if somebody disagrees with the determination of the director, they can appeal to the board of adjustment.
For two hundred fifty dollars.
For two hundred fifty dollars, yes.
How about language, a sentence on the, I don't know where it would go, maybe at just the end of paragraph one there, that says something like, in the director's discretion, sixty days or something could be, you know, sixty day, you know, based on hardship or something, some sort of a hardship based, but it's gotta be a, a time period, it's a relatively, because you already got twelve months.
How long did planning work on cleaning up, you know, those legacy?
It was about a year and, year and a half.
Year and a half, two years.
Which, what we did is we sent out letters to let them know, we did a lot of, you know, outreach, we had meetings, hearings with the planning commission that we, we noticed, as well as with, with your board, so there was a long process before expiring them. This would give the director the authority to just expire it rather than go through that process.
I'm okay with the hardship clause, but we also got to give some incentive to get the work done.
If we can get a hardship clause in under that number one, I'd be, I'd be fine.
Sixty days, as John suggested, or...
What was our other hardship clause timeframe, remember?
I don't know that there was a timeline attached to it, but it, it was more that there was a hardship, they could appeal to the board of adjustment. That relative to this, I think that was relative to systems.
Okay.
Is that the one you were thinking of?
Be consistent.
Yeah.
On time frames. Because I'm okay with ninety days.
Ninety days, okay.
Okay.
Anything but sub two or three there?
I'm good with that.
The review process, it's kind of going through the, the step by step, reviewing the final plat. One of the things that came up with the surveyors was the amount of times it was going kind of back and forth, you know, comments and revisions, red lines, so it's, it's not until we're getting to the final plat that we're sending it to the county surveyor, so there's not a lot back and forth, it's, we've, we've done everything at the staff level, then it goes to the county surveyor, so, so far, there typically one review, if there's some, some corrections from the county surveyor, then it's done at that point, because everything else has already been taken care of. It seems to be working pretty well, and you haven't heard any issues with the surveyors since we started doing that, and that's what this is trying to reflect.
Why is sub E in green?
It was moved from somewhere, so when it's green with that double underline, that means it was moved from somewhere else.
Thank you.
And you see on page twelve where it came from, from the, the green strikeout?
Oh, okay. I didn't see anything else jumping out, it'll be there.
Okay. Subsection D, plat correction, no changes from the twenty twenty-one land use code. But then we added section five with signature blocks, that was not in the land use code. So we took kind of some of the ones that are the, the common signature blocks, updated them, worked with the different entities, treasurers, and all as far as getting the, the language up to date, survey, county surveyor.
On number three, one thing that the wildfire group is starting to question, is this one access permitted? Standard notice.
Oh, okay. I hadn't gotten to that.
Oh.
I hadn't gotten there yet, we're going through the signature blocks.
Okay.
Are we at center notes, is everybody?
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead.
One of the things we're just...
What page are you on?
Standard notes, I have a thing.
Okay.
And it, it just started last week, this conversation, but there, because of the wildfire threats primarily in the Cedar Ridge area, they're saying that we should look hard at our roadway standards to say they need another way out besides just one way out, and that would mean another access, and so that's a big change, so I, I'm not promoting it, I'm just letting you know what conversation has started with the wildfire council.
Right now, land use code says eight lots or more requires a secondary access, so until then, it's not required. But like, you know, we had, again, we had the plat this morning, because of the length of the cul-de-sac, the, the fire agency asked for a secondary access, which they, they had the easement for.
Right.
So, so that was included there, and then we, we had conversations about length of, length of cul-de-sacs and, and all that. So yes, road, road design is becoming, from an emergency access perspective, becoming a, a bigger topic.
But Robbie, this is talking about one access to a particular lot or parcel.
Right.
Not one access to a subdivision.
No, I understand.
Yeah, and trying to get away from horseshoe.
But there's, but there's a lot of lots out there, like, like Robbie's talking about, that, you know, you could, you could trap somebody in a, in their own lot pretty quick if they're only allowed one access.
And that's what, even if it's one lot, not just subdivision.
And we have some larger lots, yes, it, the topography, for different reasons, there, there's reasons to have a secondary access. I think, I think this is speaking more to like, you're, you're in a subdivision, you know, call it a standard lot, you know, you know, not, not your thirty, forty acres, but your, your smaller lots, there are a lot of, you know, it was common to see the horseshoe driveways coming in, this is, you know, county engineering has been trying to kind of pull back from that, because there's so many, at that point, there's so many access points on the county road, basically like having two, two access points.
No, I understand, I'm just bringing in what we've heard, because I hadn't heard that before, lots of people.
So this is, this is new.
Yeah.
It's kind of just addressing some conversations that have come up.
So because this is still a work in progress with the wildfire council, let's stay in touch with that at least.
Or we could apply this to if it's lots less than an acre, or, you know, have some kind of standard in that regard, so, you know, the larger lots, it doesn't...
Let's see where they end it before we try to...
Or we don't make a standard plat note, we, we could move it to the special note, that if it, you know, only if the plot's not in every case.
And that, and I'm thinking maybe that's the best, best action here, we remove it from the standard plat notes.
So, so what this, this, what this says is, it's, it's essentially just referencing the Delta County roadway design and construction standards, which could change.
Right.
And so you could leave a plat note that says, "All accesses must comply with those standards," unless otherwise, whatever. Those standards may be updated based on what? They may be, they may be updated in the future based on, you know.
Write this down. I'm gonna agree with John.
Can we put that in this?
Twice in one day.
Well, he didn't really agree a lot.
I think there was one last time we had a work session.
No, I, I, I think that, I, you know, I think that's probably a good, a good call, is accesses shall meet Delta County roadway design and construction standards, unless otherwise.
Okay.
Because that, that does give us some flexibility in our roadway standards to address that. Because it is, it is an issue. After, after everything that happened with, with fires, you know, of Boulder County, it, it's definitely something that's, needs to be thought about.
And then also strike the part about there should be no horseshoe driveways?
Yeah.
Because that would be in the standards, or not.
Right, exactly.
Whatever the standards are.
Yep, yep, strike that part.
So the standard note there, number four, that is something that has been put on a lot of plats. Is there any conversation there about unless otherwise approved, all lots within the subdivision have been approved for one single residential unit, and are agricultural uses only?
That kind of contradicts where we're at with on our table two.
That's why I raised that because.
Additional residences isn't allowed, isn't allowed use. So I, 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 I think you.
And I think this was there in the previous subdivision regulations because it was pre-land use code. That was basically effectively your, your land use efforts through the subdivision regulations.
So how would you modify that to reflect current?
I would just take out the first sentence, leave the second. Any further subdivision or changes or intensifications.
Or would you add? Or would you add one single residence, one A D U?
Well, I think that, that is really addressed in, in your table two B, your land use code. Now that you have the land use code, it, it's, it's already addressed that way. You know, whether it be in allowed use, or if they want to come in for a limited use for additional units, that, that's handled in a different, different manner versus the plat.
So does it need to do it all?
Right.
What, what does that plat note get known for, is it?
I, I think the plat note, I think the plat note goes away.
I think, yeah, it don't need either.
And if somebody, if somebody wants to, somebody wants to put that as part of their subdivision, they have the right to do that, but it's.
And we've, we've, we've gone through this, you know, as far as having subdivision regulations, that whether or not you can have further subdivision or not, you know, variance, or whatever it might be. The process is built into the land use code. So delete sub four?
Yep.
What's the unintended consequence to it now? That's thinking a lot of questions.
Well, I mean, plat notes make people aware, the ones, the people that read the plat notes, that, you know, not everybody reads plat notes anyway. It, so it is really more of a notification than it, than it is a regulatory effect.
Yeah, well, no, it, it is. I mean, in theory, it's, it's recorded in the real estate records, so any future purchasers or anybody looking at the property would have notice, record notice at the very least of something. That's, that's why we put plat notes on, right? And so if there is something that needs to be said there, that development or whatever, whatever we were trying to say, you know, you said one, I would just reference the land use code itself.
If you're going to have a plat note there.
If you're gonna have something like, because, because even to say, I mean, if that's in fact what table two, two B
Yes.
says is one residence, one A D U, then, but that could change. But this plat note is permanent, literally. It's forever. Dawn is forever.
Unless you revise it.
Unless you're gonna revise it.
But, no, I'm, I'm joking. But I'm saying that recorded document exists forever. That, that, you know, the recorded document in theory, yes, of course, yeah, but, but that's why it probably makes sense. If we need to say something there about further building on a site, reference the exist, the current land use code or something.
And that's, that's kind of why I just like the second sentence. Any further subdivision or any change or intensification, you may require the one or two, go through the process according to the Delta County land use code.
And so to say applicable regulations to say the land use code?
Right. And then, then it's covered, then.
I'm good with that. Change it to land use code.
Okay.
Carl, would that not conflict with anything from the B O A if they restrict further subdivision differently? On plat notes?
Well, no, I don't, I would say not, because the B O A is taking action through the land use code.
Okay. I know, but we're putting on plat, now.
That's, that's, that's an entitlement. When, when the, the Board of Adjustments approves the variance, it's an entitlement that runs with the land.
Right.
It's not, it's not really a Delta County regulation per se, it's.
Right, but I'm just saying like, what we put on plats now is that there is a plat note. It's a, the Board of Adjustments approved the variance, yada, yada, and these lots cannot be further subdivided based on whatever condition or whatever. But then you say any further subdivision or change, which may require something different, and so I just make sure nothing's conflicting there. I would just keep it at any further development or any change or intensification of use instead of subdivision, just so you don't have conflicting plat notes.
Okay.
Can we guys think about swapping development in for subdivision in sentence two?
Fine with me.
Probably very good catch, Pete. What about number five?
That came from the previous subdivision regulations. The parenthetical though came out as a result of one of the projects where they had, you know, main transmission lines going through the property. And it was like, well, we're not undergrounding the, the, these main transmission lines, we're talking about the, the individual electrical lines.
Go ahead, Eli.
Oh, what about elevate fiber lines as well? Just wanna toss that up. Those are usually overhead along with the D M A lines. Two thousand.
Oh, that would be a utility. I mean, that's, what this is trying to do is, is get the utilities undergrounded. I mean, I, I've seen that in a lot of different.
Well, you see.
But there are places where it's not practical to put it underground.
I, I see it as a municipal standard. I don't necessarily see it so much as an incorporated standard.
In the, in the county areas, there are places that are not practical to put it underground.
That's why I question, I can see solid rock.
I, I, yeah, I think, I think.
It could be a condition of approval though for the development.
Okay, I've been taking out as a standard plat note, yeah.
Okay. John, you look concerned.
Sorry, no, I made a joke. I said that's what explosives are for.
Yeah. Kate, Kate thought it was funny.
Nobody else thought it was, okay, that one, that one just dropped.
We've, we've done land use code for over an hour now. The sense of humor is just about done.
Thank you, John.
Try to keep it light. We appreciate today.
Okay, moving on, page eighteen.
Number nine, did we not change our professional engineer? No, that was GeoHazards, sorry.
Right. I believe O W T S does require.
It is recorded. Robbie, any other standard notes on HAG in there? That would update this.
We could probably cite the statute on eleven, statute. Can you get that for you?
Do we want to cite the statute on number eight too?
Okay, yeah, and then should there, have derogation ditches in, in easement areas, so it's not just the ditch, it's the right of way.
That would be consistent with our plumbing and everything else.
Right.
What about the setbacks, you know, the, you don't want those for a standard note?
No, because they're, they're part under the land use code. Like, again, I've, I've, my interpretation is that that was there, the previous subdivision regulations, because there was not land use codes.
Right.
So I would rather, and my preference would be to not have setback standards on a plat because they change.
Right.
You know, if the land use code changes.
Right.
Have anything else on standard notes? Did you have anything else, Carl?
No, sir. So then special notes were just to identify plat notes that we used on occasion, but they don't apply in every case. And you'll see that number seven is highlighted. That was brought forward from our conversation from chapter five of cisterns. As far as a notice about cisterns using hauled water, may not be available in drought years if hauled water is discontinued.
Anything on that one, general note? Okay. Move very long, Carl.
All right, section six, vacation of roads, streets, right of way, easements, or a subdivision, unless it lands within the, the prior subdivision regulations brought forward and kind of addressed it, how, what we've been working with, with some of the requests to vacate rights of way. That's where it's really come up the most. We haven't, we haven't had any subdivision vacations under the new land use code. Um, it really is more relative to vacating rights of way.
Nothing on that, Phil. They all look pretty standard, Dave. Okay, I'm good.
That's it for chapter twelve, unless there's anything that we have not highlighted.
So we had some minors in there, nothing major?
Correct. I think the main things can, you know, working on the language relative to the stewardship area maintenance. And then adding about the, the two years to the minor plat or processes of the minor plat. Those would be two things that you have an actually themed language for at this point. Oh, another one, the hardship, as far as the director, the ninety days.
Yes.
Okay.
Which one would you like to jump into next?
Maybe chapter nine. Not a lot of changes from the twenty twenty one, other than when you get to the, the latter part, relative to appeals. But we can kind of walk, walk through chapter nine. This is where we moved, it was chapter twelve, or chapter ten was appeals, we've moved it to here, so. I think probably the main thing on appeals is all, is really the, the timelines, that's where the big, the, the conversation's been around, is how much time to afford somebody to file an appeal.
Does land use code give the director authority to waive fees?
It does not at this point.
Should it?
I don't know the length, you might, I don't like, want to present land use code, but if you want to put it in the, the land use fee resolution with some criteria, I mean, I have, I've seen that before, but it's more in the, the fee resolution rather than in the, the code itself. But it's really, you know, it's your discretion how much authority you want to give to the director for waiving, waiving fees. You know, I have drafted revision to the land use fees, kind of trying to follow with the, the changes in the land use code, the waiting till we're done to go there. If you want, I can certainly take a shot at putting some criteria or something around that.
Think it'd be better policy.
Well, I, I honestly, I, I'm, because, I mean, if, if you're authorizing the director to not charge, it's not like, it's not like saying, you know, we're gonna allow him to take fifty bucks off. This is, this is something that is kind of outside of that, that fee resolution that, that would give that ability. You know, two hundred and fifty bucks to go to the B O A over something that's probably nonsensical is, you know, that would be the prime target. We say, yeah, we probably shouldn't charge there, but we're still gonna have to go to the B O A just because it's, it's in code, we have to do it. You know what I mean?
Well, there, there, there's two ways to do it. One, we could take the fee and then the, the board could decide whether or not to waive the fee. So allow them to get, have their process, but, you know, reimburse the fee if, for, for some hardship case. But if you waive the fee for one, you gotta create a level playing field for, you know, rather than just.
It's land, it's land use code, there's no such thing as level playing field.
But Dawn, I'd rather have it in, in a resolution and a policy rather than. But Don, I'd rather have it in, in a resolution and a policy rather than. I think that's probably the more appropriate place to put that.
But I'm hearing you, you want to give some discretion to the director to be able to do that.
But, or the BOA, as you suggested.
Code says fees get charged.
Right.
Code doesn't say options to charge fees. In your fee resolution. It just lists out fees, it's not saying.
We would modify that.
The land use code says fees shall be charged and shall be set by resolution. So it is referring to that, that, that resolution. You, you know, however you want to.
I'd rather see it in the resolution. I think that's more appropriate. John? Are you gonna get Don to agree with you again?
No comment. I think, I think it's more appropriate in a resolution because then it, it reflects the will of the current board. If you don't know what the future board is, you also have to, a resolution can be drafted in such a way that it can give some guidelines to that. You know, is there a, is there a, again, hardship or is there a, um, you know, an income law, I mean, some guidance, there has to be some guidance, otherwise you're gonna have the next solar farm come along and not want to pay the two hundred and fifty bucks. Well, I mean, come on, this, that's not reasonable, we're not gonna waive it for, you know, an organization like that, but there might be a situation, um.
Keep it up, the governor may require us to.
Well, there you go, so, so that's the thing, I mean, those things can be.
Well, right.
They could, they could come along and, and say there's, there's no, for this category of development, there's no, well, that way that can be addressed in a resolution, so it can be changed.
Okay. All right.
Resolution.
It's a nice track.
It's like, you know, you, you guys seen the movie Dodgeball, right? Mike, Mike's kind of like Chuck Norris up there.
Any discussion as far as the timelines on the appeals? So as it is in here, that, uh, appeal of an administrative action, a determination or decision, so the director interpretation of the code or the director action to approve or deny, um, something that is within their purview, the, a, a person other than the applicant has fifteen calendar days to complete an appeal. It can be extended up to thirty days, an applicant can take up to sixty days. So that, that was, that was an adjustment to create that exception for the applicant to give them additional time. But then reducing the amount of time to get it to the board of adjustments from forty-five to thirty days.
Did, did we really need de novo in here?
It's, it, it's a, a, a matter of, you know, we, we could say it in a different way, that is, you know, basically you can submit, um, it, it's like a whole new hearing versus when it comes to the board, the idea was that it would just be of, of record, meaning what was addressed at the board adjustments rather than adding a, a, a bunch of new information. That's up to you, we can take it out in both cases and it's just, you know, the appeal is what it is.
I'm just trying to simplify the language here.
Yeah.
Let's, let's put it in simplistic words.
So what, what, I mean, just to make sure though, do, do you want it to be where, so when they're appealing the decision of the director, it, it's like a whole new.
I was actually waiting for John to give us the, the true Latin of de novo.
Well, well, Carl hit it, it's, it's a new hearing. I mean, I mean, the, the concept is, is, and Carl's using the right word.
I'm not saying he's using the wrong word, I'm just saying.
Versus EG and I.
Yeah.
That's fucker than this. There are different types of appeals, you either appealing on the record or you're appealing as a new hearing. I think you just put that in English, if that's, I mean, I like the.
I think that's what, well, you know.
That's what you're getting at.
Yeah, that's what we're getting at.
You, nobody's, you're, you all are not asking to change the two processes, it's just to clarify what.
We're not, no, we're not.
That's what I wanted to clarify.
Right, right, no, no, the, the process is the problem, it's the language that's the problem. Less Latin. I know, John.
Okay.
Now, we're gonna publish this in, the whole thing in Latin, all right?
And you're gonna transcribe?
No, no.
You're gonna be the only one in the meeting.
I've got a nephew that probably could.
Okay, and then the difference, so appealing from the board of adjustments and the board accounting commissioners is just of record, what, what has been presented to that to date. Um, and that, um, as a result, the timing, the, the party had, parties have ten calendar days to file that appeal. Cause they're not adding anything new, right, they're just saying, we don't like the decision here, why?
Any other thoughts on this one, then, gentlemen?
No.
Carl?
Okay, um, chapter eleven. There hasn't been a lot of changes from the twenty twenty-one land use code, um, but there's been a lot of discussion around nonconformities. So start, we'll start going through this, this chapter.
You guys would like to go first?
You want? Yes, please, I'm sorry. I thought that was a statement.
Yeah, I thought, I thought Carl was just telling us that's where we're going, so.
Well.
First time he's said where we're going, so he's saying where to go.
Retirement's real.
I'm already relaxing my mind, what else, you know, forgetting things. Um, so the first part of this is the, again, the kind of the purpose of, of nonconformities. Um, chapter one also talked about, you know, what, some, some nonconforming language is in chapter one by creating a new code before, when there was no land use code. Um, this is where you have, you know, conditions, um, conditions change, um, sometimes, you know, because of creating codes. You know, there's, there's buildings, there's uses, so this, this chapter is trying to walk through the, the different scenarios, am I timed up? Are you done with me?
Yeah. We're in second, that's all you got.
So I'm not sure it, you know, it. Are there change, are there issues that have come up that you want to talk about how this set, how this chapter might work? Cause again, there, there aren't any real changes recommended here for this section at this point. So.
Sorry, I need to answer these different iterations. The, the consistent, consistent language that we heard from most everybody during this process is the concern over, and I know John hates the word, but grandfathering.
I think, I think.
I like what grandfather, I don't, I don't like that word.
You know, the, the key was, you know, that the language was substantial enough that whatever was going on pre twenty-one was still allowed post twenty-one. You know, and that was, that was the, the biggest thing we heard from the public. Um, not just, not just in our, our four hour fun session we had at the Delta Middle School, but in, you know, the, a lot of the phone calls and emails we had. And, and I, I think if anything, if, the, the issues come with, with, you know, you know, continuation of nonconforming use. You know, that, that terminology right there basically says that, you know, we're. I, I have trouble with the language, I don't, and I don't know what the answer is, okay?
And I, I think chapter one kind of starts again, is a, it gets to, we recognize that there were a lot of conditions prior to land use code. So what you currently have, you currently have. Um, lots that were put into A thirty-five, there were five acres, were deemed legal lots, conforming lots. Um, they weren't made nonconforming, um, but they don't meet the current zoning. Here, what this section is trying to, to get to is at what point does that nonconformity need to be brought into conformance? Or what, 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 what does that trigger? Um, a lot of it is related to fifty percent of the appraised value. Um, if you're, you know, you have a house that's, you know, appraised at a hundred thousand and you're putting three hundred thousand dollars worth of, of improvements into it, what does it say in, is then to, basically to, to bring it up to, to, at least the new part needs to be part to current standards and in some cases, maybe even the old part does. New house may not meet the best since we don't have building codes and, and that type of thing, but, um, I think the, the biggest thing that's come up here is the discontinuation of the nonconforming use when it's been discontinued for twelve months. So obviously we aren't out there looking at everything as, oh, you, you know, this was discontinued starting to, you know, today. Typically, we aren't aware of it, some, something being discontinued until somebody brings it up to us, and at that point, that would start the twelve month timeframe. Cause it's, it's based on when we become aware of it. So the, I, I mean, the, the intent is to try to reduce the nonconformities. But it's not saying that if you have something nonconforming, you can't continue with it. Which is the grandfathering.
The overarching goal here is to allow people to continue to live in or use their property in the manner which they either have bought it or have used it historically. But to, when there is a change of use or intensification of use to bring it into compliance generally.
Correct, that's, that's what this chapter is, is going to, what is that, what is, when is that, when is that triggered?
Yeah, does that accurately, accurately capture that? The devil's gonna be in the details again.
Well, and, and the one I was reading, the one the coalition, they had, they had an issue with the twelve months thing, just because, you know, somebody gets, you know, in a serious accident, they're laid up for twelve months, can't operate their business. Does that mean they're automatically nonconforming and, and getting shut down? You know, I, I think we, we should be able to have some hardship language in there. I mean, other than, like I said, I just, I, I didn't, I didn't like the language of this when we adopted it. When we went through the whole process, I really just, just didn't like the language. I still don't like the language, but I don't know how to fix it, so, uh, I'm, I'm just complaining for the sake of complaining here maybe, so.
Carl, how would you revise this?
I don't know, a lot of this is pretty, pretty standard from what I've seen in zoning codes.
Maybe that's why I don't like.
I'm not saying a good, better, or different, it's just, it is pretty standard, standard language that's in here.
Okay.
I don't, I don't, I'd have to really.
And, I mean, if you guys, if you guys are comfortable with it.
I'm not ready to jump into this one thing.
Hey, like, I just. I mean, if there's any ideas as far as other places that have, that have tackled this in a different way, I'm happy to take a look. Uh, John, if you were, anything?
I, I'm not spending time thinking of this, you know, I remember there was some, there was a little bit of discussion, you know, that you're referring to. It seems like there has to be some method to.
Right.
To encourage conformity, at the same time recognizing the current situation, that's the balance you're trying to, you're trying to find.
Mr. K, your thoughts?
I was under the impression that this gave exactly what Don said, if you were allowed to use it pre twenty-one, you're, you're allowed to do it post twenty-one. Except if you were in violation of something in pre twenty-one. You had a violation of, I, I don't know what it could have been, maybe you're spilling sewage and you've been cited. Then you wouldn't, that wouldn't be allowed post twenty-one.
That's not a grandfathered.
So there's two different types of nor, nonconformities, there's what I'll call legal nonconforming. Meaning that it conformed to whatever the standards were in place at the time that it went in, and then the standards changed and made it nonconforming. Then there's the, just nonconforming, it's, it's not a legal nonconforming, in other words, it was just done and it didn't conform and it didn't meet, even with the time, it didn't meet the standards when, at the time that it went in. So typically, there are not protections for that latter, there are protections for the former. If, if it met the standards when it was put in, the grandfathering, that is. You know, that, that, that is, that is when you try to create some exceptions as well as, again, thresholds of do we want to try to turn that into conformance at some point, somehow, sometime, or not? And I think that, that's kind of the bigger policy question and then that, that will drive the language.
Well, I, I'd like, I'd still like to see some hardship language on that twelve month thing.
Okay.
You know, we, we can't just have, we can't just have a hard, a hard number like that, we don't know what, what goes on.
Do you want the hardship addressed at the director level or board of adjustment or?
I think it could be addressed at the director level. Costing money. And, and once again, I mean, it, this is, this is something that's, that's not gonna be common, but if it does happen, you know, it, it, and more than likely, it's gonna be because some neighbor dispute taking place and, and the complaints brought about because of it, it would be my guess. Or in District Three. No doubt.
And, and typically, when the, the, the non, the discontinuance of the nonconforming use usually comes up with something is creating a nuisance of some sort. You know, otherwise you, we don't know about it.
Right, right.
Okay, I'd like to table this one and give Carl some time to do a little research.
Okay.
For us to spend some better time on it. I was focused on chapter twelve. That work for you guys?
Okay. So in addition to chapter eleven, there's chapter six. So in addition to chapter eleven, there's chapter six in it, which is about improvement agreements. And then chapter fourteen definitions.
Is de novo in there?
You can add it. We can add EG versus IE.
You can, you can have any of that stuff. You said eleven.
We did delete Chow.
Eleven, six and fourteen.
Correct.
There's a reason that people use Latin, because it's a dead language. So in theory, the.
It can't change.
It can't change, it won't change. That's why medicine and law uses Latin, because the definition won't change. Whereas our words change, change definitely. I mean, words that we use now were used differently twenty years ago, fifty years ago, a hundred years ago. That's why, that's why legal, that's, yeah.
And a good example of that is the term queer. Nowadays, it's socially acceptable, but back in my day, it wasn't.
So I'd ask everybody to get the calendar out, let's take a look at the last week of June. Particularly twenty-eight, twenty-nine and thirty.
I'm going to be out of town from the thirtieth to July eleventh.
So twenty-eight or twenty-nine?
Would, would work for me.
Let's do Wednesday of the twenty-eighth, where it's a good time.
Early morning and afternoon.
One o'clock on the twenty-eighth?
About three o'clock.
And I got a four o'clock. Two?
Two o'clock.
Two o'clock. June twenty-eighth. Review the changes chapter eleven, chapter twelve, go over chapter eleven here, six and fourteen.
Okay.
Did you capture that Lindsay?
Yeah. Send it out.
Carl, anything else for today?
Not for today.
Others, Robbie? Well, thank you all for being here.